All right, good evening ladies and gentlemen, I've got thumbs up, so we are live. I'd like to call this meeting to order, this is our regular meeting of Tuesday, June the 4th. We will first stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, we'll follow that by invocation by Alderman Vaughn, and then a moment of silence.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which the name is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alderman Vaughn, do you wish to speak?
Yes. Father God, and Father Father, and the Lord Jesus Christ, and the Big Brother, and the Redeemer, and the Savior. Father God, and God, thank you for your only and beloved Son, born of a virgin Mary, the joyful and grateful Father. We got you alive, and we pray that you die, and we pray that you be dead, and we pray that you raise me from the dead. Thank you for line your son, to set up your light here, and make an intersection for the sons and daughters like us. Father, we thank you. Thank you for being God, and by this faith and by this word. Now we pray, God, that you will continue to give us the ball out of cells. It's known and unknown, sin and not sin, in love and in transgression. Always thinking for this land, this boy, Father God, that you alive and put it to be led, Father God, but we only got ready here by you, because you laid in their heart and put us in your positions. We pray, God, that you will continue and allow us, Father God, to look to you and heal us from this all, come and all out of heaven, and all out of earth, come to you. For God is in direction, or in which way he wants us to take this city, which way he wants us to lead, use your people, because they are not ours. Father God, we thank you, we praise you, we honor you, we glorify you, God, because we are what you are. Thank you for sitting high and looking up, and we thank you for being the God that you are. Father God, as in the mighty name that you have been created in, amen.
Once again, thank you everyone, we appreciate everyone being here tonight. Our first order of business would be approval of the official agenda with consented items. Do we have any changes to the agenda? Alderman Moreland?
No ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
No ma'am.
Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am.
Alderman Beatty?
Mayor under Board Business?
Yes sir.
Number 10.
Yes sir.
Would you add, would you consider adding, would the Board consider adding consideration of the starting date for the Board? Or on our date, it marks 5/24 of an envelope tax abatement for 44 properties LLC effective June 1st, and you make 31st, 29th, would you consider adding that to?
To the consent agenda, all right. Do I have any objections to adding item B to the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll put it on the consent agenda, thank you. Alderman Beatty, anything further?
No ma'am.
All right. Alderman Sistrum?
No ma'am.
Vice Mayor?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Vaughn?
No ma'am, ma'am, thank you.
All right, with that, do I have a motion for approval of the official agenda with the consented items as amended?
Approved as amended.
I have a motion from Alderman Rupp, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Vaughn, thank you so much. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, and I will read the consented agenda items. First is consideration of the minutes of the May 17th, 2024 work session of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Next is consideration of the minutes of the May 21, 2024 regular meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville. Under Board Business, we have item A, consideration of the reappointment of Mr. Frank Childs, a sole applicant, to the Golden Triangle Regional Airport Board for a term beginning July 1, 2024 and ending June 30th, 2029. Under B, we just put on consent, is consideration of providing the start date for the Board Order dated March 5th, 2024 of an ad valorem tax abatement for 44 properties LLC to be effective June 1, 2024 and ending May 31, 2029. Under the airport, we have request emergency authorization as per Mississippi Code Section 31-7-13-K, that an emergency exists such that the delay incident to giving opportunity for competitive bidding would be detrimental to the interest of the governing authority to run a regulator for the airport runway lighting system in the amount of $7,462.50 from Electrical and Construction Specialists, Inc. Two is request approval to apply for an MDOT multimodal grant for a new hangar for the purpose of leasing it to UMMC Air Care and Disaster Response Operations for $490,100 to work in conjunction with an ARC grant of $827,500, with a total match for both grants of $146,400 to be divided between the city, county, and MSU. Item three is request authorization for Golden Triangle Planning and Development District to prepare and submit an Appalachian Regional Commission, ARC, pre-application and subsequent full application on behalf of the City of Starkville for the purpose of constructing a new hangar at George M. Bryan Field to be leased to the University of Mississippi Medical Center, UMMC, Air Care and Disaster Response Operations. Under Finance Administration, we have item two, which is consideration to approve the list of city unmarked cars as required under Mississippi Code Section 25-1-87. Three is request authorization to execute postage meter renewal agreement with MCC Solutions Leasing USA, Inc. for $130 per month for 36 months. Under Human Resources, item one is consider authen- request authorization to hire William Turner as a non-certified firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department. Two is request authorization to hire Alex Bishop as seasonal sanitation worker in the Sanitation and Environmental Services Department. Three is consideration of the discipline recommended by Sanitation Director Chris Smiley as a result of IA number 06042024 for a Starkville sanitation worker. Under Parks, we have consideration of approving change order number one with econ construction for the JL King Park Splash Pad Expansion Project in the amount of $8,377.22 increase. Two is consideration of approving contract amendment number one for Form Design Group for the JL King Park Splash Pad Expansion Project in the amount of $6,750 increase. Number three is consideration of accepting the low quote from H&amp;H Construction and Excavating LLC in the amount of $17,292 for the McKee Park Pickleball Court Ramps Project. Under Police, we have request approval to purchase from American Integration Contractors, AIC, a sole source provider, one investigative data platform, annual subscription with commercial LPR data access for up to 50 sworn officers, commercial license plate reader, LPR, which will access all vigilant systems, commercially acquired national vehicle location data, and mugshot gallery in the amount of $7,750. B is request approval to purchase from Utility Associates, Inc. as a sole source provider and compatible with existing systems, number three Rocket In-Car Video, SaaS, co-terminals with existing agreement, 5-1, 2024 through 3-31, 2026, 23 months, and three Rocket In-Car Video, HaaS, at a total cost of $18,908.76 from the Capital Outlay Car Rocket Camera System Line item. Under Code Enforcement, we have consideration of calling for a public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated 21-19-11 to determine whether the structure is located at 201 North Long Street with parcel number 118J-00-082.00 is a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. B is consideration of calling for public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated Section 21-19-11 to determine whether the structure is located at 321 Crete Street with the parcel number 118I-00-125.00 is a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. C, consideration of calling for public hearing under Mississippi Code Annotated Section 21-19-11 to determine whether the structure is located at 117 Clements Avenue with the parcel number 103A-00-011.00 is a menace to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community. Under Utilities, we have request authorization to advertise for bids for the electronic reclosers, controls, and appurtenances material only. Two is request authorization to accept the low quote from Wesco for optical ground wire pole line hardware for the Fiber Loop project in the amount of $10,651.77. Last but not least, number three is request authorization to approve change order number one with the Kim Pro for additional herbicide spraying for the Trim Cane Lagoon and Station and Electric Division pad mount transformers in the amount of $12,173. And that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Happy to do that, thank you. Next is our announcements and comments, and I was gonna make a couple of announcements, actually a very quiet week, and we've got the ribbon cutting, we opened the frame shop on Main Street, we just did that this afternoon, they're brand new, and that satisfies a need, we haven't had a frame shop in quite some time, and these folks are opening their third location, with their other location being in Tupelo and Laurel, and then we've got, I poked my head in what was Mo's, and that's now gone, but they are working on it for a new restaurant called Whiskey Ranch, and they were very, very pleased, and they were at work, so that's wonderful, it's also Main Street, and then Olive Tree is opening up as well, so they're moving from the Cotton District area to Main Street, so we've got lots of things going on on Main Street, which is really exciting. And we've got paving projects pretty much going on all over town, they have started in the Annex area, we're doing sand roads, so we've got lots of paving that's gonna be done, and we're really excited about getting that done for this summer project, so that's, that kinda concludes anything I might need to add to the, to the program, so Ms. Moreland, anything for you?
Lemon.
Mr. Rupp, you wanna talk about Lemonade Day?
Yeah, the Saturday, Lemonade Day in the Golden Triangle, encourage everyone to get out, it's just such an easy thing to support, these young entrepreneurs, just go buy some lemonade, it's that simple. We've got 527 kids signed up and 131 lemonade stands, so you should not go thirsty if you go out looking for a stand, and we appreciate you supporting these young entrepreneurs. The ones that sell the most, we buy them a new bicycle, so this is a really good experience for them, and it's an easy way to help out, folks, just go buy some lemonade.
Cool, thank you, that's really a good project, and Cadence Bank?
Cadence buys a license, and Mark Castleberry underwrites the marketing, and then the East Center takes care of the, facilitating the event.
Super, all right, thank you. Alderman Brooks?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Beatty?
No ma'am, thank you.
Alderman Sistrum?
Vice Mayor?
Yes ma'am, Mayor, thank you for the recognition. Mayor, I now have three things that I'd like to briefly bring to the attention of our Mayor and Board. Let me first start off by recognizing Mayor, our member appointee to the Golden Triangle Airport Board, Mr. Childs, who's in the audience with us tonight, we're very fortunate that we have a citizen of his experience and background, and he has done a very immaculate job in representing not only our city and county, but the Golden Triangle area and this great state of Mississippi. Just wanna recognize him, had a few brief words when I came in, and thank you, Mr. Childs, for your service. Mayor, secondly, and three things, I want to share with my distinguished colleagues and those present and those tuned in, I listened to the WTVA newscast with excitement on, on Friday afternoon during the 4:00 PM newscast, and there was our police chief, he was certainly doing a very outstanding job conveying the message very professionally and meticulously about the City of Starkville's need and desire to have 41 new cameras and two new staff members, with the staff members working 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and he did a very professional job and represented all of us well. And matter of fact, Mayor, I became informed that he was on the air, and I went to my resident chief just to hear the interview, that's how important it was, and Gabe Maynard closed the interview by saying that he was a quote from you, that no one should live in Starkville with fear of, of, of being safe, and the message was that anyone who lives here should be safe at all times, so, and we certainly appreciate you, and mentioned the costs, and when you speak of safety, you know, $320,000, and certainly with the budget approval less than three months away, I'm, I'm just really have a high level of confidence that we'll see that in that line item. And lastly, our Honorable Mayor, and I just must say this, I have to say this, I was getting ready to come to this meeting, Honorable Budget Chair, I saw our Mayor on TV, and she was indicated, and that she is, and the news was indicating that you're going to be seeking a third term, I saw that at 5:07 PM on WCBI this evening, so I thought I'd share that with you just in case you didn't see it while you were here, but I did see it on WCBI this evening, so I just want you to know the Vice Mayor saw that, and that was just my third observation, so that's-
Well, I appreciate that, Vice Mayor.
You're so welcome, aye yah, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir, and I had no idea that they were going to put that out there, that was a little Facebook post I put out this morning, and so I, they've surprised me, and you have surprised me, so, all right, thank you, sir. Alderman Vaughn?
Thank you, ma'am, no ma'am.
All right, next we have citizens' comments, now's an opportunity for anyone wishing to speak to the Board, you have three minutes, and you can share concerns, and compliments, and any other thoughts that you might have, so, Mr. Turner?
Green to the Mayor, my name's Avantone Ward, seven to the Mayor, that to the police chief, to the fire chief, to sanitation. People getting nervous about everything that's happening, and they wondered how can convicted fellow continue to spread hatred, and it's scary. Also, the citizens would like in prayer and hope that once they get the Nemo Center back together, that we can take it as a voting precinct, because of what this person said, that if he don't get elected again, it, it would be a bloodbath, and if that's a threat, then that doesn't make people very uncomfortable, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Anyone else?
Good evening to the Board of Aldermen, Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, my name is Patty Drapala, I'm a resident of Ward 4. I know many times those of you in city government have to deal with complaints from citizens, but I as a citizen tonight come to give you praise and to praise your city employees. Let me tell you quickly why. I have had a terrific water leak on my property for the past eight months, and it's taken replacing toilets, and replacing a water heater, and finally finding the leak in my main water pipe. And through all of this tribulation, I want you to know how courteous your employees at Starkville Utilities were to me. Now, let me tell you, I ran up quite a bill on that water and sewer, and I guess, you know, in retrospect, I'd gladly wanna pay you again, but they were courteous, they listened to my concern, they explained things to me, from the water meter to the people, receiving people, coming in, and we finally got that water leak fixed. So my pocketbook is lighter, but I feel a whole lot happier, and I thought you needed to know that your employees are a great bunch of hardworking people who give their all to the City of Starkville. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, we really appreciate your willingness to take your time to come up here to say that, I know Mr. Kemp would be very proud, and I'm sure he will convey that to his employees.
He should.
So, thank you so much. Anyone else under citizens' comments?
First, I wanna thank the Board for giving us the opport-
If you would identify yourself-
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm Amy Choi, and I'm one of the members of the Mayor Youth Council, and-
My name is Habib Khan, I'm also a member of the Mayor's Youth Council.
Okay. And first, we would like to thank the Board for giving us the opportunity to be in Mayor Youth Council and helping, help us contribute to the community. The reason why I'm speaking today is that we want to let you know an event that's happening in June 15, Community Fun Day.
So, we will be hosting this at the Boys and Girls Club, starting from 10:00 AM. Kids of all ages between pre-K to 12th grade are welcome to attend, and basically people from the council, we will be splitting up into groups, teaching different kids about various real-life problems in the community that it is. And also, there will be a lunch break provided as well.
It always helps to have food. Okay, all right, well, thank you very much, and we appreciate you being on the Mayor's Youth Council. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right, seeing none, I'll close it for citizens' comments, and we will move to public hearings. Mr. Havilin?
Good evening, the first request we have is for a variance, it's variance 24-01. This is a request by the Skelly's Furniture for a variance of wall size requirements for a furniture store located at the former Bowles Building. The furniture store is in the process of remodeling the eastern or center portion of the building, the applicant is proposing to install three separate signs in the front, as you can see in the graphic. The front facade, the total square footage is 309.8 square feet, the maximum allowed in that zoning district is 150 square feet, unless the building is more than 200 feet away from the nearest adjacent street. To go back to this slide, and that's the way the ordinance currently reads, so Wood Street flows just to the north, and it's only 50 feet from the building, even though it's not visible from Wood Street, that's the way the ordinance is working, which is part of my next presentation, UDC, that is going to be changed. So if it is more than 200 square feet, or 200 feet from the nearest adjacent road, it is allowed to increase up to 250 square feet. Since Wood Street's there, it's not eligible for that relief, so the applicant is still wanting to do the 309.8 feet, so they're seeking relief from Section 1478A2. This building has previously received a special exception for facade materials and for stormwater variance. The request was notified at court, UDC, 15 property owners are record, notified directly by mail, with a legal ad on April 27, 2024, and a sign on the property at a conspicuous location. As of this date, we have received no response from the notification. Here's a picture of what the building would be proposed to look like with the signage on it. Here is a letter that is included in your packet, that is their applicant's statement on their reasoning why based on the criteria, and again, here are the criteria for a special, or for a variance, so, if there are any questions.
Okay. Any questions of Mr. Havilin from the Board?
I'm far from the street, ma'am.
Alderman Rupp?
How far from you?
Uh, I believe the front, the front of the building is 264 feet from the highway, but it's like 50 feet from Woods.
Alderman Brooks, did I see your hand?
No, that was, that was exactly my question.
All right, anyone else? All right, seeing none, I will open it as, well, no, I won't. Applicant here, do you wish to, do you wish to address us?
My name's Matt Largen with Hedrick Sign Company, representing the Skelly Furniture, and I'm here to answer any questions the Board may have.
Okay, all right, do we have any questions of the applicant? Alderman Sistrum?
One of the reasons that I'm guessing, and I'd like for you to confirm to me that you feel the need for the exception, is because it is set so far back from the street in front of it, and you have all that parking area up front, so for somebody like me who's a little visually impaired, you need a slightly larger signage?
Yes, ma'am, we felt that this was an adequate size due to the distance from, from the highway.
And the scale of the building.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right, all right, thank you, I will open it as a public hearing now. Anyone wishing to speak for this request or against this request, now would be the opportunity. Now would be the opportunity, either for or against. Seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing, do we have any further conversation or discussions, questions? If not, I'll accept a motion. Alderman Rupp? Okay, thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Alderman Vaughn? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All righty, and next?
This, the second public hearing is for the public hearing in consideration of the update due to the Unified Development Code. I'll just go through it fast, nothing has changed from the previous one. There's a total of 45 amendments in there, they're broken up into broadly seven categories. First one is for reducing the number of people in the historic preservation and to allow for people to do regular maintenance without a certificate of appropriateness, and then also addressing the code enforcement, how it's sort of laid out, and then sort of consolidating it throughout the code back into one section. And this is the graphic that Mr. McCaskey presented last time, showing what the proposed process is on the right, and then the current process on the left. We have gone over this with code enforcement. At least you. And he's good with it.
I don't see him jumping up and going, no, no.
And then we also have some changes in the U standards for special exceptions. This is really for stuff that will get to special exception, that's more of a commercial nature, how it's built, that happens to fall residential, it's just applies some development standards to it. And then we have, the next section is for sidewalks, removing the sidewalk zone and going to more of a street-by-street layout for the sidewalk, and then also changing some of the requirements for sidewalks that are existing. And then the vegetated, the mowing standards are getting incorporated into a new mowing vegetative standards, which is basically pulling information from another section into it, that's where it consolidates. And then the last part, all that stuff in the yellow is related to the technical codes regarding fire protection. And then there's a broad general other topic or other category that includes form-based code requirements for lot width, we kind of control development through other means, so it's kind of a pointless requirement, requires variances to go through, so just reducing that to help speed it along. And also adding requirements for portable restroom facilities to make sure they're not permanent accessories, modifying the wall sign requirements that I previously just mentioned, where you can't see it from the nearest adjacent road, you're still eligible for the increase. Also adding tree protection for water course protection areas, which is already a thing in the code, we just kind of beefed it up with some, to make sure the requirements are very clear. And then changed roach control to from wooden stakes to steel, and then adding all the associated definitions for equipment. Are there any questions?
Okay, any questions of Mr. Havilun? Any questions? All right, seeing none, I will open it as a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak either for or against any items that are related to the change to the UDC, now would be the opportunity. Anyone? Either for or against? All right, seeing none, I will close it as a public hearing. Do we have any, any other discussion or conversation about the, about the UDC changes? If not, I'll take a motion.
Do approval for the changes outlined by Mr. Havilun?
Okay, all right, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
I hear a second from Alderman Systrom and Alderman Moreland, I'm going to take the one to my right first. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you so much, Alderman Vaughn, I appreciate the light switchwork there. All right, and moving on to the claim stocket, which I actually believe is our last item on the agenda for consideration, we have approval of the claim stocket. Do I have a motion?
I'll make such a motion.
Thank you, Alderman Beatty, do I have a second?
Second.
Don't ever want to speak at once, thank you, Alderman Moreland. All right, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
All right, five to two, motion carries, and if you would please allow me to read the call for the work session. In accordance with the notice required under Mississippi Code Annotated 254113, the board will have a work session on Friday the 14th of June, 2024, at 11:00 AM. Meeting will be held at City Hall, second floor conference room, located at 110 West Main. Notice should be provided at this work session within one hour of this meeting by posting such notice at City Hall. The notice should be made a part of the minutes of the board meeting, and it will be an open public meeting of the city of Starkville, and the public press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to recess?
A motion.
A motion from Alderman Vaughn, do I have a second?
Second.
We all want to stay here, okay, Alderman Moreland, thank you so much, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we are in recess, thank you, everyone.